Good evening. I'd like to call to order the public hearing on the fiscal year 2024, 2025, operating budget for today, Thursday, February fifteenth, 2024, at six oh five P M. We'll begin with the roll call of the Finance Committee. With Councilmember Jim Frayer.
Here.
Councilmember Johann Lopez.
Present.
Councilmember Doug Sutton.
Present.
Councilmember Heather Dunn.
Here.
And Councilmember Greg Burnett. I do not see any other members of the Finance Committee online, and we have a call. So with that, we'll move forward. We look forward to members of the public to provide their input and comments on the operating funding proposed for the city departments, the Board of Education, and the grant agencies. The public hearing tonight will not address those items in the capital budget. We're only focusing on the operating budget for this public hearing. And capital budget items would be items such as building construction or any infrastructure projects. Our goal always is to keep taxes as low as possible by allocating those funds necessary to maintain, and in some cases, improved services to our residents. We plan to draw down on our rainy day fund or general fund balance to provide tax relief to our residents during this rather difficult budget season. We are in the early phases of the budget process, with the initial recommended mayor's operating budget being presented this week at the Board of Estimant Taxation, the B E T, meeting on Monday, and to the Common Council this week on Tuesday. That recommendation, which consisted of a $442 million operating budget, included a proposed 4.5% or $10 million increase to the Board of Education's current operating budget and a 4.4% increase to the city operations. This year, as has been stated several times, we are presented with several budget challenges and priorities that we have to face. We have to make some really key decisions on what we can focus on now and what we might have to phase in over the next few budget cycles, similar to what you have to do in your households when economic times get tough. After hearing your comments tonight during the public hearing, the Common Council Finance and Claims Committee will conduct a special meeting next Thursday, February twenty second, to discuss and recommend the operating budget cap. The cap represents the maximum limit on the total appropriation for the upcoming fiscal year. This recommendation will then be presented to the full council for their review and approval on Tuesday, February twenty, twenty seven, and in turn, with a window of approving the total cap by March fifth. Once the cap is set, it is then passed on to the Board of Estimant and Taxation, the B E T, who will conduct departmental meetings and reviews during the month of March, which will culminate with the B E T conducting a public hearing on Wednesday, March twentieth, on the tentative operating budget plan. So I encourage you to please mark your calendars for another opportunity to share your thoughts to the Board of Estimant Taxation as it relates to the operating budget. As we begin the public hearing, those individuals who wish to speak tonight related to the operating budget, and again, we're only focusing on the operating budget, may raise their hand electronically to be recognized. And if you're here in person, you can sign into the sign-in sheet. Please state your name and your address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. We will provide you with a thirty-second indicator that you have thirty seconds remaining in your comments. This way, we can, everyone will have an opportunity to share their thoughts. We will also have translation online via Zoom for Spanish and Haitian Creole translations. As of this afternoon, we received no emails related to tonight's public hearing to be entered into the record. And at this time, we'd like to invite Mayor Rilling to provide a few opening comments before we start.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. First of all, I, excuse me, I do want to thank the Finance and Claims Committee. I want to thank the B E T. You know, this is a very, very challenging and difficult time. I know I say this every year, but this year in particular. Also want to thank members of our finance team that work at City Hall. We have Chizume Lam and Agnes Kawhi. And also, I noticed we have Henry Dakowitz here as well. As I mentioned, this is going to be a very challenging year because of the revival that we just had in two thousand and twenty-three. It always makes it a little bit of a challenge. We're working very hard and working long hours trying to make sure that we keep our tax base as low as possible while still providing the services that members of the community expect. I know this is about the operating budget, but I did have a conversation with Dr. Estraya a few moments ago. She indicated to me that there was concern among some of the parents about the capital budget with the lockers being removed from the capital budget. I explained to her that when I first saw that, I knew right away I had to put that back in the capital budget because I've been to some of the middle schools and I know how, well, let's say that the lockers are not very pleasant, not very, they're kind of torn apart and they've been there for a long time. So we are going to put that back in the capital budget. But again, the operating budget we're talking about tonight, that's the budget that most significantly affects the members of the community, the residents, and it's a very long work in progress. What you see right now is probably going to be changed several times, but we'll get it done. And again, thank you to Finance Committee of the Council and the B E T and our staff at City Hall. But again, thank you, Mr. Burnett, for your hard work. I know we have been to my office several times over the past couple of days, going over the numbers and crunching the numbers. So thanks again.
Thank you. And I'd also like to recognize, I see online, Councilmember Barbara Smith. So let the record show her presence. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to see if any members of the Finance Committee has any questions before we start, or excuse me, any comments before we start the public hearing. Okay, very good. So with that, if the I T team can, if any, again, anyone who wishes to speak, if you could raise your hand electronically, and the I T team will recognize you.
We have, in person, we have Liette. If you could, please, please come up, state your name and address for the record, and I believe try to keep it to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Liette Bescherbeis. I reside at three six three Rowton Avenue. I'm here to talk about the capital budget, even though you mentioned that we're only talking about the operational budget. But yes, it's, my comment is in reference to replacing the middle school lockers at Rowton Middle School. And so I've been six years. I've been the P T A president now over three years, but I've been with the P T A for six years. This has been a topic of conversation beyond six years. So, and as you've mentioned, Mayor, they are in a very old decrepit state and need to be removed. So they were installed in nineteen sixty-six when the school was built. They're very extremely narrow. I mean, for us parents to figure out how to accommodate our kid to fit all their huge thick binders, never possible. So then they end up carrying all these very thick, heavy binders in their backpacks all day long. Because either the lockers don't open, again, they're too narrow, too, too small. Some are falling apart. And I mean, the backpack doesn't even fit in the locker because now there are these massive backpacks. And it's just overall safety for everyone, having all these backpacks in the classrooms. You know, there's tripping and falling involved and just a cluster of backpacks everywhere. So it's just not safe. So I am, unfortunately, my child is graduating, so she will not see the new lockers, hopefully. But I'm, I'm still here advocating for the future generation of the Rowton students. And we definitely need to update and bring us up into the future generation of, so just make our school much better for the whole community. That's all I had to say.
As I've mentioned, I've been to the schools and I agree with you, and the money's going back in the capital budget.
Thank you for those comments. Is there anyone else who is in the, in the audience here in the council chambers that wishes to speak? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to those that are online.
Diane Larsa. Please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I want to thank the city for having a hybrid meeting in the first place. Really appreciate it tonight for me. Anyway, first, I know and appreciate and have read about the quotes in the newspapers about an especially tough year. Let's find creative solutions. I ask that this council look at first review my operating budget public hearing comments for the last ten years, maybe fourteen years in, in our mayor's predecessor. Please, because I may be cut off at three minutes. The first way that we can address this, the important and the difficult times, is to look at where we can cut costs in the operating budget. So let's first go to the N P S, especially in light of Dr. Estraya's comments. For several years, I've discussed how they can reduce their energy costs by having a much more robust, aggressive, solar, heat pump, geothermal for existing buildings, not only new buildings, new schools, as well as additions. This is something that schools throughout the state have done. But in Norwalk, our policy is costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars in energy costs, and it's time that we stop this poor policy. I'm on record with it, and some of you know about that. We reduce our fuel use. We stop. It's good to remove underground fuel tanks, but we immediately go to gas instead of looking at other renewable energy sources. I also wanted to state, for the record, I believe the D P W should adopt the waste management from the school system. It's ridiculous and inefficient to have two different groups negotiating contracts. And also, the fact is, there's very little, if any, recycling taking place in our school system. I've been on several committees over the last twenty years that have tried to handle this. And there's very little, if any, food waste management that could be done, and it's curriculum enhancement. Lastly, I think we should end the Welcome Center rental and shift it to a city-owned property. That would save us lots of money, lots of money. On the city side, we again have to look at the grant, a full-time grant coordinator, because we have not gained, we have gotten many, many grants, but we could even get more to offset the tax burden. I think we need to trim the Chief of Staff budget. I'm sorry, everyone else held it to three percent. The D E I budget, which quite frankly, I, I, I find is important, very important. I lobbied for it, but too high. And again, we reduce our energy use, reduce the electricity with ground-mounted solar, canopy solar, and rooftop solar on existing buildings.
You're, you're over three minutes. If you could wrap it up, please.
I will wrap up. Lastly, we have to increase our revenues. And that includes full-time grant, create energy, which is almost like revenue, enforcement fines, and let's look at companies donating in exchange for naming rights of things like the new football stadium that we're going to build. Thank you very much, and I hope you'll take my comments after over ten years. More to heart. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Lisa, please state your name and your address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I didn't hear Britten. I just heard Lisa, but I'm assuming it's me. Thank you. Lisa Britton, Nineteen Shorefront Park. It's difficult to comment specifically on the budget without seeing the final amount of the grant list, so we can estimate the mill rate and see how much residential will have to perhaps pick up the slack for the commercial market. But my comments are going to be made to the following line items: the Debt Service and Contingency Fund, Public Works, and the Board of Ed. Our debt service has obviously increased due to the two new school constructions of Norwalk High School and Sono, the Sono School. But when you talk about the contingency line item for collective bargaining contracts not yet completed, I must confess, I'm more concerned about what percentage the state will actually end up reimbursing us for Norwalk High School if you factor in some of the unknowns with any construction site, the timeline for construction, and the short and long-term cost of money. So I really think that that debt service line is going to have something that we're going to have to look at. Public Works, personally, I think this department has been consistently underfunded for the twenty-six years that I've lived here, and that's a shame because I think that their work is probably the most visible part of our great city. I'd like to go on the record and raise a concern I've had for a few years now about the potential overlap functions of the newer and separated departments of the Economic Community and Development Group and Traffic Mobility and Parking. I personally have never understood why some of those functions and the respective funding didn't sit under D P W. I haven't seen the line items yet, but there's got to be some overlap and efficiencies there. Finally, I support the four point five increase for the Board of Ed. I did read somewhere that the superintendent said more money was needed for more prep time to relieve the teacher's stress. But I'd like to offer up that teachers might not need more prep time if they weren't being micromanaged by central office and what I see as a growing administrative staff. We do need more aides in the classroom for the kids, but we don't need more expensive top-down supervision, given that our test scores are tanking along with behavior in the classroom. I'm also concerned about staff turnover, extended leaves of absence, and several high-profile resignations from principals and teaching staff over the years. Lacking confidence in this Board of Ed, I'm disinclined to give them any extra discretionary funds. And just one final comment. One of the news articles said that eighteen new positions were being requested and none were being funded. I'd like to make the case for hiring additional zoning and blight enforcement staff. And I don't know which department or line item that sits under, but quite frankly, these positions would easily pay for themselves through fines, et cetera. Not to mention the priceless goodwill they bring towards cleaning up neighborhoods and helping ensure buildings are safe and not overcrowded. And they'd also put on notice those landlords cheating the tax rolls with their illegal apartments from the, you know, the very revenue that we need to run the city. So that's all I have to say for now. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments.
Constanter S., please state your name and your address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hey. Hi, everyone. Constantine Stoyano, Fall, Fall Ward Avenue, East Norwalk. Again, first, thank you very much for organizing this. Very helpful. And it's my first time attending. So my, my main two points, it's hard for me to understand the percentage increase in all four and all five budgets. So after a very high increase in all four, why do we have another increase of four point five percent? Which is way above inflation. I just don't understand why that is and what's, if there's a good reason, what are the tangible benefits to, to citizens? Like, it's really, really hard to understand. So for me, unless there's a good reason, like, we should never have a budget above inflation. Like, it's just kind of not, I don't think it's responsible. And if there's a good reason, like, it should be clearly explained. And the other point is on the, on the rainy day fund. Yeah, I, I understand the times are tough. They're always tough. They're never easy. But if, if we feel like we need to use the rainy day fund in these times where employment is still, is as high as it can be, like, I don't see these times as kind of rainy day times. So if we use the rainy day funds in these years, what happens if we have a recession? So just kind of looking at these two things, I really don't understand why we're doing these things. And we can go into more detail on some line items, but for now, let's just keep it high level. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise their hand electronically now. Mr. Burnett, there is none. There, there's no more.
There's no other individuals that have, residents that have their hands raised? Okay. Why don't we just give it one more moment? If anyone else wishes to raise their hand and add any comments, you can do it at this time, and you'll have three minutes to share your thoughts. And I see that Councilmember Dewan Wiggins has joined the meeting, so let the records indicate that. He's a member of the Finance Committee. Okay. If there's no, no one else who wishes to speak, we will adjourn the public hearing at this time on the recommended operating budget. Thank you for your participation. Let me know. Good evening, and welcome to the special meeting of the Common Council Finance and Claims Committee for today, Thursday, February fifteenth, at seven thirty P M. We will start with the roll call of Finance Committee members. Councilmember Jim Frayer.
Here.
Councilmember Johann Lopez.
Present.
Councilmember Doug Sutton.
Present.
Councilmember Heather Dunn. Councilmember Dewan Wiggins. Councilmember Melissa Murray. And Councilmember Greg Burnett. So we have a quorum, and we'll identify if either Councilmember Wiggins or Murray joins the meeting. With the roll call completed, we'll move right into the agenda items. Items three, four, and five relate to our tax collector. So I will turn it over to Lisa B. For update on our Claims Committee report, tax narrative, and monthly tax collector's report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This month, there are no special requests for the claims. So the claims report, the list of refunds, is for informational purposes only. And with your permission, I can skip forward to the narrative and the end of January report, unless you have any questions about the claims.
I think we're all set.
Okay. The end of January was a good month for us. We went through the first seven months of the fiscal year. And as of the end of January, we were at ninety-one point six percent of the tax levy, ninety-three point two six percent of the sewer use levy. Our collection period extended into the month of February because February first was the last day to pay. So consequently, even though we're looking pretty good in January, we're very, very slightly ahead of where we were last year. We won't really know where we stand until we compare through the end of February, because we did take in a lot of timely payments the first week of February that were postmarked, were made on February first and processed February first or subsequent. The collection period went fairly well. There were no major issues. What we're working on now primarily, in addition to getting ready to send out past due notices, is our tax sale. And since the last report, we've started getting some of our title searches back in. We've collected more than nine hundred thousand dollars on the tax sale properties just since November with that first set of letters going out. We need to regroup now and see what happened with the second installment payment of this grant list and see what other properties might be included in the sale. So we'll be doing that analysis probably the rest of this month. We hope to send past due notices out the first week of March, perhaps, and file our liens later in the month of March, and then move forward into the spring on more enforcement activities. Still working with the Health Department on the health permits. We had a wage garnishment. We'll be sending the marshal out for some business personal property, but right now, kind of cleaning up after the collection, dealing with some customer service issues and things like that. And of course, looking forward to the, the, the budget season and trying to do some estimates for the Finance Department on what our collections will be going into the next fiscal year. But I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have. I tried to include a little bit more information on what a tax sale is in this month's narrative, because we haven't had one in, in three years. Our last one was in two thousand and twenty-one, right after COVID. So just to give a little bit more detail on how it actually works and why we do it. But I'm perfectly glad to answer any questions that any of you have.
Do we have any question? Yes, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you so much. I have a quick question. Does the delay in assessing the collection rate into the end of February have any negative impacts on financial planning or reporting?
Well, it's like that every year, because the last day to pay is February first, so we're, we're aware of it. It, it doesn't affect anything at all. It's just, we're used to it. The way that the tax system works is they, they are given a month's grace. So even though the bill is due January first, they have until February first. And just because of the way our system works with the processing, a lot of people pay in person at bank branches. We have to go and retrieve those payments and post them. So we might not post those payments until later in February. The same thing really happens over the summer when we do the summer billing. August first is the last day. But a lot of payments come in on August first and slightly thereafter. So we don't really know where we stand until at the end of August. But if you look at the comparison year-to-date from this year to prior January, we're right where we need to be. And that's usually how it goes. Our, our taxpayers are actually pretty good and our collections are pretty stable.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Have a few more. Have a few more questions. But just a quick follow-up, just in reading your narrative. In terms of the transfer payments, are there any potential long-term consequences relying on the transfer payments from previous year's taxes to meet the current tax obligations, especially given like the ongoing tax appeal? current tax obligations, especially given like the ongoing tax appeal cases?
Well, what happens is when we have, we had the twenty eighteen revaluation and many of our taxpayers, um, did not find satisfaction with the board of assessment appeals. So they took the cases to the superior court. And those cases are adjudicated over a time period and usually it takes in some cases, three years, four years, five years for those cases to become adjudicated. Once they are adjudicated, um, in many of the cases, those taxpayers have made payments. And now the court is saying, we think that your assessments were too high. So the city needs to basically refund or credit those taxpayers who in good faith made their payments while their appeals were pending litigation. So we have to honor the verdict of the court. The problem is we've already collected that money from prior years. So what happens is, um, it basically erodes our delinquent collections because we've already taken that money in in prior years. And now it's our current fiscal year. We have to give that money back. So that, you see that with our prior collections, but you also see it in our current levy. So that's part of why we have that change to the current levy in the end of January or in the column that is the second from the far right. It says change in levy. You can see that our levy went down. Now, some of it went down for motor vehicle reasons, but the bulk of it went down. If you see real estate, two point three million dollars. Um, those were changes to properties on the current grand list. So that was money that, you know, had to go back to the taxpayers that we had already collected, basically. Um, because the figures that we're reporting to you every month are, are real-time figures. Their net of refunds, their net of changes, their net of credits. And as I understand it, the finance department does budget for this. They call it erosion um, in, in, in collections and they, they plan for it and they budget for it particularly um, going into a revale. Um, they know that there's going to be court appeals and they know that we're going to have to be giving money back over time. So I don't know if the CFO wants to weigh in on that, but they do plan for it.
All right.
I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. Thanks. And just one last question is, I mean, just a general question. I mean, are there any strategies that can be implemented to, uh, mitigate like the impacts that the stipulated judgments have on the adjusted levy?
I don't know that we can, that the tax collector's office is not really involved in any of the litigation. It's the law department, the office of the corporation counsel and the assessor's office, probably um, the, 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 the more the way to mitigate it would be to have m- more accurate assessments to begin with, um, that people don't appeal and win. Um, but it, it, you know, that is the goal of revale and the assessor's office, and they're trying the best they can. Um, but it, it, it's not something, I wouldn't know how to really do anything about that. I apologize. That's not a good answer.
No, it's okay. It's good. It's fair. That's good. Thank you. Thank you so much. That's the, yeah.
Any additional questions? Okay, very good. And, um, Lisa, we're smiling because you have, um, a guest behind you who have been
distracted.
Uh, hogging
Uh oh.
The, the screen.
That's my big one.
Yeah.
They like Zoom. They like Zoom.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you. Um.
Thank you, folks.
Numbers are heading in the right direction. And as you stated, we'll, um, we'll know better what our posture is after we, after February, when all of the, uh, the second pay, uh, warrant payments were du- uh, due, we'll know
Yes.
where we are going into the, uh, uh, fourth quarter.
Correct.
Great. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. See you next month.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to, uh, item six on the agenda, which is an update from the tax assessor on the, uh, revale process. So over to our interim tax assessor Paul Gorman.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Uh, since I last spoke to you last month, um, not a lot has changed because at that point we were uh, just finishing up all of the informal hearing information being entered into the system. And where we're at now is we provided finance with, uh, some grand list numbers, as I think were presented on a couple of occasions this week, including this earlier this evening. And right now we're just in the final stages of dotting the i's, crossing the t's, making sure that everything is, um, accurate, that we don't have any mistakes before we go to the final step of signing the grand list by the end of next week and submitting it to the state. And then the next step after that is that March first begins the application period for the board of assessment appeals. That closes at four thirty on March twentieth. If you come on March twenty-first, unfortunately, by state law, we cannot accept your application for the board of assessment appeal. So please make sure that everybody knows it has to be by March twentieth at four thirty P M. And then the hearings, uh, the dates have not been set yet. We're waiting for the board of assessment appeals to get us the dates in April, but they are setting aside a numerous amount of days to make themselves available to hear the appeals of the residents and the commercial entities in the town.
Okay, any, any questions? Um, the one question I have, um, the, the, this being a, a fiscal re- revaluation year, um, did you see the number of, um, meetings, um, w- was it in, in line with what we expected or was it a higher amount or?
Oh, well, the informals, which aren't something that's done every year. So it's, there's nothing to be able to compare to, but the percentage that was a tet- that were booked was around four, four and a half percent, uh, for residential. And that's about what Vision was expecting. They were hoping to be under four. But they were expecting right around four, and that's what we, we received. I think the commercial was a little bit lighter than John Valente was expecting. It was a hundred and twelve, I believe, was the number. And that's out of over two thousand accounts. So I was, like, quite honestly, expecting the, the rate to be higher there. But it wasn't. But again, and this goes back to Mr. Lopez's question from before. I, I can expound on that a little bit. Yes, the goal of the assessor's office is to be as accurate and fair as possible to all, um, taxpayers in the city. But when it comes to, uh, corporations, they're calling us in October. They're calling us in September, asking us for our numbers because they're ready to go to court immediately without knowing what the number is. They just automatically assume that most likely it's going to be wrong and they're going to have to fight us. So it's very difficult to mitigate it because they're coming at it from a, a negative point of view that we never get commercial valuation correct. I've reviewed a lot of these and so has a, a couple of other consultants that have been on board for the past year. And I think John Valente and the Safe Ground Analytics team did a very good job of valuing our commercial properties uh, that are based upon income, uh, income-based strategies.
Great, thank you. Uh, I don't see any additional questions. So, uh, thank, thank you for that update and, um, uh, we'll, we'll keep mo- moving forward with the revale process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a great month.
You too. Uh, moving on to item seven on the agenda, which is the update from Oak Hills Authority and, uh, their audit report. Uh, we're going to defer this, um, update until the March meeting. Um, and all, as also, uh, hopefully at the March meeting, we'll have good news on a possible vendor going into the location at Oak Hill. So uh, we'll defer, uh, this update until the March meeting. Which moves us to item eight, which is, reads as follows, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Gov Connection Inc. In an amount not to exceed one hundred and nine thousand dollars, six hundred and forty-six. Let me repeat that. One hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents for a purchase of seven hundred and ninety Microsoft Office three sixty-five annual licenses. Uh, Gov Connect Inc. is a state of Connecticut contract, number N C P A zero one dash one four four, and the account noted. Do we have a motion on this side? Thank you, our council member Heather Dunn. Um, and we have with us our director of I T, Joyce Lu, to, um, provide the narrative for this request.
Um, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for the opportu- opportunity to present this agenda item tonight. Um, I am requesting approval from the finance and client committee to renew and acquire our office's three sixty, three sixty-five license for, um, the city employee. Um, offices three sixty-five play an important role in empowering city employee um, to perform our job e- effectively, collaboration efficiently and ensure smooth functioning of our city operation. Um, the license that we are acquired now, including, you know, normal, um, office, um, like Word, Excel, PowerPoint, you know, Allo email. And this, our license also including Microsoft Team, which is a collaboration platform that it will be have a, a, allow a city employee have a video conferencing ability. And then we also have a Microsoft SharePoint. It is a web, web-based, um, document management platform um, for the C P, uh, city employee to collaboration, you know, do collaborating on documents. And then we also have Microsoft One Drive, the planner and Microsoft Form. So all those, um, um, software that, um, will help us to do our daily, um, task, um, you know, um. And in this quote, we also have a multiple version, um, I have a multiple, um, um, a licensee for the Microsoft video, visual. And visual is a diagram application that we use to create, um, flow chart, um, diagrams, organization chart, a flow plan. And that is a really, really useful tool like now, uh, um, I T use a lot and other uh, department like, um, D P W, um, engineer, and they also using that to, uh, create diagrams. Um, including in here, uh, there, there is a couple, um, couple license for Microsoft projects. Well, Microsoft project is a project management software that is useful planning, tracking, managing our projects. And then, well, the last one is Microsoft Power B I. Um, it is, um, analytical tool, um, we use to visualize and analyzing data. Uh, it's just share, uh, um, across the organization, um, um, P, uh, police department, they utilize this to, um, uh, Power B I, um, to, uh, allow them to make the data-driven decisions. Um, so this license are, um, crucial for our city employee to efficiently perform their task. Um, so now come to down why Microsoft, right? So Microsoft is a sole, so, well, sole provider for the office three sixty-five license. Um, they do not deal with corporate customer directly. So we, we need to acquire our license from, uh, Microsoft authorized contract, um, resellers. Um, Gov Connection, um, their quote, like, you know, attached in this agenda, they have a provide us the most competitive quotes um, for this license. Um, so, um, yeah, so that's why, um, we put them in this agenda. And the, this cost will be covered by I T's current year's software operating budget. Um, yeah, so I T consistently obtain the license, you know, uh, like every year, a couple of weeks ahead of a time, you know, to ensure smooth operation for our employees. Um, well, when we deal with, um, resellers, they don't want to give us quote, um, uh, more than thirty days. Like, so that's why we, you know, you are going to see that every year around February. Um, end of, and end of January, beginning of February, we are going to have this, um, uh, uh, the, we are going to request a quote. So just a heads up, you are going to see this agenda item coming up repeatedly, uh, in February every year. Um, yeah, um, yeah, um, thank you for your attention. Like, uh, feel free to ask any question, um, or any concern about this purchase.
Thank you. Um, one, one question I had, I, I saw that the current, um, the expiration date is February twenty-ninth. Um, um, uh, pending this, this committee approving it and moving it to the full council on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh. Does that give you enough time to, um, enact a contract before it expires on the twenty-ninth?
Yes, yes. Actually, um, um, all those license, uh, when we deal with our, uh, reseller, as long as we have a P O, they are going to issue the same day, uh, purchase, like, a license. So now every license is like a cloud subscription base. So it make it very easy for, um, the license to be deployed to us within a day or a couple hours.
Okay, great, great. Any questions about this, um, request? Okay, very good. Um, so with that, I'll, uh, no questions. I'll, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, show, uh, raise a hand. And it is unanimous. Uh, thank you. So again, we will move this item to the full council on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh for final review and approval. And then, uh, we'll, we'll have our licenses in place.
Thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
You too. Great. All right, that moves us to, uh, item nine, which is to review the recommended fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budget. Um, we have with us Henry Dakowitz. Um, the, the, uh, members of the finance committee, you received the presentation um, at the common council meeting on Tuesday. Um, but, um, however, we, we've asked Mr. Dakowitz to walk us through the presentation once again. So, uh, so that i- if there's any questions that you might have, since you saw it for the first time on Tuesday, uh, this would be the opportunity to kind of bring those questions forward. Um, and, and, um, if there's any item that might need additional research as it relates to your question, uh, we'll be sure to talk about that and get you the appropriate response. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dakowitz to take us through the, um, recommended mayor's operating budget.
Thank you, Chairman Burnett. Uh, pleasure to be here to help out, uh, Tom Ellis, who couldn't be here this evening. So the agenda for the evening of what we'll cover is the budget process and calendar. The actual recommended operating budget. We'll review some of the numbers on the COVID and ARPA funds. The recommended operating budget, one layer down by department. Uh, the unrestricted unaside fund balance known as the rainy day fund and a brief conclusion. So here's the calendar, which you've seen for many years. We start by the budget department sending out pro forma budgets to each department in late October. They review them and submit their numbers into our computer system. Then the CFO and budget director sit down with each department to go over their requested budgets. On Monday of this week, we had the mayor's recommended budget. Tonight is the finance committee public hearing. Um, in a little less than two weeks, the common council sets the budget cap, the ceiling. And then the B E T has meetings with each of the departments and a public hearing. And they forward a tentative budget to the common council, March twenty-fifth. Um, if their budget is lower than the council cap, then we're sort of done. If they recommend a budget that's higher, the council has to decide to agree or not agree to increase their cap. Ultimately, the council sets the final budget cap, April ninth. And then it comes back to the board of estimate and taxation for the final budget and tax levy in early May.
Okay, going forward. Did anyone have any questions as it relates to the schedule so that you understand how it's going to flow from this point on? Okay, very good. Thank you, Henry.
Yes. So allocation of local dollars, um, everyone tends to focus on the top line number. The city local expenditures, um, the budget for this year. For this year, uh fiscal twenty-five is two hundred and five point nine million. And if you go down below into the top third. The Board of Ed is at two hundred thirty-six point eight million. But it's really appropriate to make several adjustments. Um, the city has in-kind services that are performed on behalf of the Board of Ed, but it's in the city's budget. Those would be things like I T. Finance Department. But um, legal costs. So we round up those numbers, they're filed with the state. And for this coming year, it's approximately ten point two millions. Additionally, the city makes all the payments on debt service, that would be the principal and interest repayment. Um, but there is a certain amount that segregated for just the public schools. Um, and that amount is seventeen point four million this coming year. So really, the local expenditures are not two oh five, it's two oh five minus the twenty-seven. The amount of money the city spends on its own operations is one hundred seventy-eight point three million dollars. Similarly, on the Board of Ed, it's the same two hundred thirty-six. But we add the twenty-seven, they are getting the benefit even though it's not in their budget. So the two thirty-six, they're really spending two hundred sixty-four point four million. When you look at the total, last year was four hundred, the current year ending June thirty is four hundred twenty-three point seven. The uh recommended for fiscal twenty-five next year is four forty-two. It's an increase of nineteen million or four and a half percent. And as Tom Ellis pointed out Monday and Tuesday, it's been pretty consistent with these adjustments. That the city's expenditures are about forty percent and the board of eds are sixty percent. Next. Um, this is just a review, we've been showing this slide for several years. So we had FEMA expenses during COVID. So we got one point seven million dollars um for the city for reimbursing some expenses. Like cleaning office buildings, et cetera. Uh, C R F is the COVID relief fund. It's really the COVID relief money from the federal government that passed through the state of Connecticut. Um, the city got one point nine million, the Board of Ed got seven point two million. Uh, there was Office of Early Childhood, about four hundred fifty-one thousand, and then we have the Esser Grants. So the Board of Ed had eleven million and two million. Esser three is the identifier for the ARPA money of twenty-four point eight million. So there was a total of almost thirty-eight million for Esser money for the schools. Secretary of State and C T C L grant, I believe, if I recall, that was to help assure that elections were. Conducted accurately during COVID, a hundred twenty-seven thousand. And then the city's ARPA money, um. Because Connecticut doesn't have operational counties, we were given. Twenty-two point one million as a city, but then in lieu of the county monies that normally would go there. We got an allocation from the state of seventeen point two million, so our total was thirty-nine point three million. Um, if I go to the last column, the city took in forty-three million of these grants. The Board of Ed had forty-five, a total of eighty-eight million dollars, which is really significant and very helpful. Um, and the amount that was ARPA was sixty-four out of that eighty-eight. The point is that uh ARPA is coming to an end. All the monies must be allocated by December thirty-first of twenty-four. And I believe the city has already allocated the funds for different projects. The actual expenditure of the monies is required by December of two thousand twenty-six. So we have the allocations, the people in charge of the projects know they have to spend the money within two years. So I think we're sitting in good shape regarding ARPA money. The negative is it's ending and we're not going to get that this coming year. The mayor's recommended budget, we recommended a um Norwalk Public School Board of Ed increase of ten point two million. Or four and a half percent over last year's approved amount of two twenty-six point six for a total of two thirty-six point eight. But excuse me, I'm getting over a bad cold. Uh, for the city of Norwalk, with the increases eight point eight million, um, slightly less than the schools, four point four six. Over last year's approved one ninety-seven, the total recommended amount is two oh five point nine. When you add the two together, you're looking at something like four hundred and forty-six point half million. Uh, going into more detail on the city's operating budget. This slide is in size order, decreasing size order from the second column from the left, recommended for twenty-five. So number one was debt service. Um, the numbers went up from forty to forty-two point five, an increase of two point two million. And the percentage is five and a half percent. Uh, I'll remind everyone, over the last three, four years, we've been increasing the amount of money that we borrow. And at the same time, over the last year and a half, the interest rates that we have to pay have gone up. That combination increases our debt service. Public Works uh came in, there are twenty-nine point six, but they came in with a three point two percent increase. Over last year by nine hundred twenty-six thousand police. Again, three percent, and a twenty-nine point three, eight hundred forty-six thousand increase. Employee benefits, we, we got a break this year with the health insurance and some of the funds in our insurance fund. So the amount recommended for the year is one point seven million less than last year. The fire department, again, one of the large departments at twenty-three point two million, again, three point one percent. So the largest city departments came in at or very close to the three percent target the mayor had laid out. Pension plans, it's not that we increased so much as that last year was so terrific. That our O P E B was eight million dollars less than what we had expected. So now the numbers are normalizing, so we have an increase of two point two million or twelve point four percent. Community services, another large department, ten point nine million. The increase is only four eighty-two, but on a smaller basis, four point six percent. Economic and community development went up by three hundred thirteen thousand, five point seven. Corporate council, fifty-one thousand. Um, contingency, as Tom explained. Uh, every three, four years, when we renegotiate union contracts, we. While we're in discussions and negotiations with the union, we don't want to explicitly show what we're budgeting. So therefore, we put a certain amount into the contingency uh account. And ultimately, that will be used to fund whatever gets negotiated. And right now, we don't know what that number will be. Grants, um, nine thousand less than a percent. Chief of Staff, uh, one hundred fifty-six thousand, this might be the addition of a webmaster. Um, human resources, again, twenty-four thousand, the rest of the increases are really very modest. So the city alone went from last year one ninety-seven to two oh five nine, an increase of eight point eight million or four and a half percent. Board of Ed starts with a larger base, their number last year was two twenty-six point six million. They have the same four and a half percent increase. But that's a bigger increase because of the bigger base of ten point two million in total. We're going from four twenty-three seven to four forty-two six, an increase of a shade under nineteen million or four and a half percent. Any question?
Before we move from this slide, Henry, um, one question I had, when we look at the larger uh line items, debt service and. The pension plans, which are both uh increasing over two million dollars. Do, do we have any wiggle room with those numbers or are those kind of set numbers that? Um, um, you know, they're, they're kind of baked in.
Well, debt service is the amount of principal and interest payments that are due this coming year. You definitely want to budget exactly, and we do it to the dollar. That says we have enough money in our current budget to pay that. Um, you would never want to under budget that. On the pension plan, um, frankly, this is how a lot of counties and state governments have gotten into trouble. Where they didn't, you know, we have actuaries who analyze our payroll. The number of people, they make estimates about, okay, let's assume they're going to retire at sixty-five. So we can count on them making contributions for the next several years before they retire. Then we make assumptions about what the investment rates will be that we earn on those monies. And the actuaries are sophisticated mathematicians, and they come up with a recommended pension contribution. Historically, over the last ten fifteen years, there are quite a number of counties and states. That did not contribute the recommended amount by the actuaries. And what happens is you're putting less into the fund, that smaller amount earns less than what you anticipate. And now the gap between what your assets are valued at. And what you owe from a liability to pay out those people when they retire grows larger and larger. So the city has always had a conservative philosophy that says, we're going to fund whatever the actuaries tell us. Um, now circumstances can change. Uh, if we do better on our investment returns, then next year, maybe we need less of a contribution. It also depends on our census, uh, what is the age? When we had an early retirement offer during COVID and quite a number of people took it. We had fewer people contributing versus what the originally planned. And they were taking out money earlier. So subsequent to that early retirement plan, we had to contribute more to make sure the pension plan. Was still on target to be fully funded, I think it's in seventeen years. So again, um, some governments have tried to under invest in pension plans. Uh, Norwalk, I think wisely and conservatively, just says, let's take that number that we have to put in there. Wait, goes in July first, so we get credit for the investments for the whole year. And that is why our pension plans, we have four of them, are seventy-five percent funded. And our O P E B, the post-retirement employee benefits, which is mostly health insurance. The last I looked, that we were ninety-seven percent funded, uh, much better than many cities, it's just one less headache. And also the rating agencies view that very favorably compared to everyone else.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, uh, before we move off the slide, any questions? Just one, yes, sure.
Thanks, Mr. Dakowitz, one, one quick question, so budgeting for the uh debt service, were there any significant financial constraints? Uh, needing to be needed to be imposed in order to kind of help maintain our triple, triple A bond rating?
Could, could you repeat that? I'm not sure I heard it all.
So in budgeting for the, for our debt service, were there any significant or specific uh financial constraints that were needed to be imposed? To help maintain our, our healthy uh triple A bond rating?
I think that um. To maintain the, the bond rating of triple A, you definitely want to budget for the whole amount that has to go in. And literally, we can budget to the dollar, we look at all the debt we have outstanding, we know the interest rate we pay on each layer of debt. And we have a certain amount of interest and a certain amount of principal that will be repaid. Uh, the financial advisor uh runs those numbers for us, and that's the number we put in. So in my mind, it, it, it's going up because we have capital projects. That we need to fund and we need to borrow the money for that. And unfortunately, I don't have to tell everyone here, over the last two, three years, the interest rates. Throughout society, but including municipal tax-free bond rates has gone up. We work aggressively with our investment bankers to get the most competitive rates. Um, and to figure out how much we should be borrowing. Um, but that number, I don't look at it as a constraint, I just look at it as a mandatory, that's where we are. The only way that will come down is if we have bonds that are maturing every year. If we end up borrowing less than the amount that matures, the amount of absolute debt outstanding would go down. And the second thing would be if interest rates come down.
Got it, so does that imply possibly kind of uh, you know, having less capital infrastructure projects or? Well, is that really not really a?
I, I, I've talked about this for several years. Um, one of the big challenges the city has is that we have, I forget what the actual number is today, one hundred seventy-five or two hundred million. Of approved capital projects, which we have not yet bonded. Okay, and, and the reason we do that is because of I R S rules. You know, it would have been great when I borrowed at one point seven five percent to borrow three hundred million and stick it in a bank. The I R S doesn't allow you to do it. So we look at our cash flows. And so we borrow based on the cash flow needs, I want to make sure I have enough. For the project managers when they have invoices, but at the same time, not too much to exceed the I R S requirements. Um, having said that, um, we did undertake last year a review of all the open projects, those historical projects. And um, when you say cut back on projects, that's one thing that might be able to be done. But right now, it's, it's a big challenge for the city.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Dakowitz.
You're welcome. Greg, did I say that right, or would you say it differently?
No, you, 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 you read the script.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Freya has a question.
Uh, yes, thank you, Henry, um. On the pension, um, you mentioned that that's four separate funds and running from. Uh, funded from as, as low as seventy-five up to ninety-seven percent.
No, 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 I'm sorry, the four, excuse me for interrupting, the four pension funds are about seventy-five percent funded. The O P E B for post-retirement health is ninety-seven.
Okay, okay.
And for the, oh, I'm sorry, did you want me to, the four funds?
No, I think you, you, I know where I'm standing now, so seventy-five percent is, is the number that I was looking for. How does that rate with uh other municipalities as far as how much they've funded?
I would say, based on the feedback we got from rating agencies, that seventy-five percent funded. For pensions is probably in the top twenty percent across the country. Um, meaning it's a good thing and it's more conservative. The O P E B, we're probably in the top three percent.
Right, so if we were to be less conservative. And still not. Yeah, or let me put it another way, could we be less conservative and still not get ourselves uh into that uh? Uh, every deepening hole of trying to make up in future years what we've not contributed this year? Is there a possibility that we could do something along those lines?
I, I, um, I'm really not the expert. I think our financial advisor, who's been advising the city for over twenty years. And is very close to all the rating agencies would be the best one to advise. Uh, can you cut back a little bit, what would that mean, what would that imply? He's the one who has given us guidance on funding pensions, O P E B, debt service, and the rainy day fund. And some of it is science, but some of it is art. And so we, you know, we have, we have capital, we have debt outstanding. And we once did an analysis looking at the amount of debt outstanding for triple A and double A credits in Connecticut. And he increased it, I believe, to five hundred million as our limit. And I believe currently we're at four fifty. So that's something that's going close. The second big ratio is the ratio of the debt service that's in the budget, that top number. And comparing it to the total expenditures of our budget. And he found that the triple A credits usually had no more than ten percent as that ratio. So the debt service is going up, but the budget goes up every year. So we've been in the nine and a half to nine point eight percent range. So those are things that the rating agency might look carefully at. At the same time, they look at that rainy day fund, they look at our cash on hand. They look at our surplus every year, and they look at those things very favorably, and then they pull it all together into an overall rating.
Okay, do we have, last question, do we have any idea what uh kind of a surplus we're going to look at this year?
I, I'm not privy, I'm not close to it anymore day to day. Um, the budget department, usually starting after the December results, six months in. Looks at budget versus actual and looks at the numbers, but I would just say historically. Um, during my five years, we've always run a surplus and we often did not need to draw down the rainy day fund that we planned. So somehow the managers, and often that's because we have vacancies. So we fully fund those vacant positions. And maybe they don't get filled, or maybe they get filled halfway through the year, so there's a save that's built in. So those saves tend to offset some of the other things, and that's how it all works together. But I, I would suspect, I haven't heard anything that would indicate that we might be running out of deficit.
I'm sorry, what was the last thing, what did you?
I, I haven't heard anything that suggests that in fiscal year twenty-four, that we would run a deficit. I haven't heard anything like that. I haven't heard anything like that.
Yeah, I'm not, well, I am definitely conservative if it was deficit, but I'd love to see a surplus.
Wouldn't we all?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, so these are the major drivers, employee benefits and insurance was a positive decline in expense by one point seven million because of health insurance and workers' comp. The debt service went up by two point three and the pensions went up by two point two. So that's what Tom had listed as the major drivers. Because as you saw, with most of the other departments, they're coming in at around a three percent. And if not, it was on a very small department, so the dollar amount of the increase was rather immaterial. Um, here we look at the rainy day fund. And again, as I said, um, the ratios that are normally examined is comparing the rainy day fund to the total expenditures. So on the top line, we have our total expenditures. Unrestricted, unassigned at year end, sixty nine. It went down to fifty eight because the auditors that year said that when we budget a drawdown of rainy day fund, it can't stay in unassigned. So that's why it went down to fifty eight and then it went up to seventy two, seventy four, seventy eight. Seventy two and sixty six, the expectation is that this year, we're drawing down six million dollars. That's why the seventy eight eight goes down to seventy two eight. And this coming year, twenty five, we're planning another six million drawdown. So assuming nothing else changes, the seventy two would go to sixty six. It doesn't include, going back to Mr. Freyer's point, if we had a surplus in twenty four, that would offset one of those declines. That our, our general fund balance would be a little bit higher. Looking at the rainy day fund as a percentage of expenditures, it's ranged from twenty down to fifteen. As a CFO, I would say you never have too much rainy day fund and the um, the rating agencies really look favorably because they're trying to figure out what is the risk of the people who buy the bonds not getting paid? And when they see fifteen percent sitting on the balance sheet, in an emergency, we could just tap into that and pay the debt holders. They view that very favorably. Questions? No?
Yeah, uh, yes, if we can go back to, yeah, um, you know, looking historically since twenty nineteen, um, if we go forward with the recommended drawdown, um, that percentage will be the lowest it's been since twenty nineteen. Any cause for concern with that number, that fifteen point one percent?
Well, it's interesting because our, our city policy is that the rainy day fund should be between seven and a half and fifteen percent. That certainly was established before I got here. So we're happy to comply at fifteen percent. Um, but again, if the managers are managing well and they generate some surplus, um, we, we feel, you know, there are so many negatives out there, that this is one of our real pillars. Uh, the other one is the, the pension and O P E B funding. And when we go to the rating agencies, we're able to highlight, yes, we may have challenges, but look at, look at this bulletproof balance sheet. I, I would not be concerned with the fifteen point one because it's two years away. It would mean that we draw down the whole six million this year with no surplus because we had a balanced budget and we drew down next year's six million. So I, I think we're in the healthy range between fifteen and twenty, at about seventeen and a half. And so far, so good with the rating agencies and balancing everything we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So in conclusion, we believe this is balanced, fair, shows some fiscal restraint. Um, and that's the mayor's recommended budget. Thank you, Agnes, for turning the slides.
Great, thank you. Any questions as it relates? Again, again, this is the, I'll, I'll say the initial pass of the mayor's recommended operating budget. Um, uh, additional, um, thoughts are, are taking place now as it relates to the operating budget, as the mayor indicated, um, at the beginning of the public hearing. Um, there could be um, potential changes to what we're seeing right now. Um, and, and we'll receive those changes um, um, from the mayor's office as soon as possible. But uh, this is the, the foundation, this is the start. Um, so um, more, more to come. But uh, this is the launch in terms of where we're at right now with our operating budget.
Uh, can I ask one question? And when we were talking um, the other day, um, the mayor indicated that, or Tom had indicated that there was eighteen addition, headcount additions that were not going to be filled. Are those numbers that we just looked at uh, include the eighteen or have not been deducted from the budget number yet?
It, it's my understanding that what has been presented to us in this proposed budget does not include the, actually, it's a total of nineteen positions that um, were initially submitted as part of the uh, budget request from the departments. And uh, I don't, I believe, is it um, a total number amount? Was nineteen, but is dol, is there a dollar amount associated on this?
Per department with how many they currently have and how many?
It just has a total amount, yeah. I, I believe, I, I, I thought Tom Ellis might have mentioned the associated dollar amount with the nineteen in the presentation, maybe I'm, I'm missing that, but to answer your question, the nine.
Some of them do have.
Some of them have the details.
Some. So like, this one.
Yeah, there's some numbers.
Some of them is just a general overview, so.
Right, yeah, he didn't total the.
So I'm just, so my question really is that is is that, that the four forty two number does not include any headcount addition?
That is, so.
I, I would, I would clarify, Agnes is the expert since she came here and she maintains the the rosters and reconciles them, reconciles them with human resources and the controller shop. So what happens is, at the end of any year, when we start a new budget, we have a roster. We have all the people who are on the payroll and authorized vacancies, meaning it's been funded.
Right.
But no one's in that position yet. And what happens is when we go through the budget, just like people request expense money, they request positions. So they're not the vacancies, they're new positions to be added. And every year, what happens is a certain number are requested and usually a smaller number is approved. And the number that is approved, when I say approved, it's approved in the mayor's recommended and then the council does their thing and the B E T does their thing. Um, in this year, it sounds like nineteen were requested and the mayor decided that his recommendation would include zero. Agnes, did I get that right?
She's not in the city, yes, she's not in the city.
Okay, I, I think I got it right.
Yes, yes, yeah, sorry.
Okay. Okay, she's, she's in the aquarium, it's a little bit of an echo.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, any other questions? Well, thank you very much for the time.
Great, thank you, thank you very much, Henry.
Welcome.
If this, are there any other questions? Okay, uh, so with that, uh, we'll move the motion to adjourn. Uh, Councilmember Heather Dunn, thank you, all those in favor. It's unanimous, uh, thank you for your time and effort and involvement and uh, we'll move forward from here. Thank you, we stand adjourned.
Have a good night.